Good evening. It's 6 o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We will start with an invocation led by Councilmember Smith, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Fugit. Please rise as you are able.
Tonight we gather to improve the well-being of Knoxville, to serve our residents well. Through all of our decisions of zoning, budgeting, and policy, please let us be humble enough to hear the best path forward, break through our limitations, and guide us towards a better path. For students returning to school this week, we pray for excitement, friendship, learning, and safety. For teachers, we ask for the same. Give them renewed strength and passion to do what they do best. For those seeking election in our city, we ask for both perseverance and rest. May the candidates represent the voices of all Knoxville residents well tomorrow and for the rest of this campaign season. Be with our city in this time of new ideas and desire for representation. Amen.
Place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a sincere republic of which stands a nation under God, indivisible, eternal, just as a promise. Okay, Mr. Johnson, would you please call roll?
Councilwoman Fugit?
Here.
Councilwoman McKenzie?
Here.
Councilwoman Parker?
Here.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Here.
Vice Mayor Roberto?
Here.
Councilwoman Singh?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Smith?
Here.
Councilwoman Testerman?
Here.
And Councilwoman Thomas?
Here.
Date-present mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the minutes from our last meeting?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any items to be withdrawn? Are there any items to be postponed? Are there any items requested to be added by motion? Okay. And I don't think there are anything, there's nothing on consent, so we'll move right on to my mayor's report. I want to start off by recognizing the significance of this day, the 8th of August. I just left the Beck Cultural Exchange Center's 8th of August event at the Tennessee Theater, where hundreds of people came together to remember Emancipation Day here in Tennessee. On this day in 1863, the future U.S. President Andrew Johnson freed his slaves in Tennessee, and others followed. So since that day, it's been a day of celebration of emancipation in Knoxville and around the state. So thank you to the Beck and to others who have organized events to help educate and memorialize the significant events and what they mean to the fabric of our city. Today, as Councilmember Smith mentioned in his invocation, is the first day back of school for all Knox County schools, students, parents, and staff. And I was really happy to join members of the Austine East community this morning as they laid down the red carpet and welcomed students back with music and the Road Runner and a lot of festivities. Even some teens who don't like to smile on the face of adults and feel embarrassed, I could see some smiles coming out. So it was really nice to be part of that, and I want to welcome all the children of our city back to school. Hopefully, it will be a safe and productive and good learning year for all. Yesterday, we had some really severe weather here. In fact, the National Weather Service said that there was indeed a tornado that touched down in our area. So I wanted to take a minute to thank all of the first responders and public service crews and traffic engineers and signal engineers, and also our first responding partners throughout the community who answered the call and dealt with all the many issues going on around our community. To my knowledge, and thankfully, there were no serious injuries reported, but a lot of frightening moments, and there's still a lot of cleanup to do. So I also, you know, thanks to our public service workers, firefighters, police officers, utility crews, our 3-1-1 operators, and many others who worked all night to keep people safe and to restore power. There were more than 200 reports in Knoxville of downed trees, and we were also happy to send our firefighters and others to the assistance of the level crossing apartment complex that was one of the most severely hit just outside the city limits. KFD and KPD also responded to dozens of calls of blocked intersections, downed power lines, natural gas leaks, fire alarms, car wrecks, and more. So please keep in mind, if you or someone you know experienced damage to your property and do not have the financial means to clean it up, you can request help from Crisis Cleanup by calling 865-351-0552. So if you need help with cleanup, call 865-351-0552. Also, I know there's several people in the audience here tonight who signed up to speak about the really rapid rise in rent in our Knoxville community. This is a really hard situation, and I'm grateful for your presence here. And I just wanted to use my mayor's report to share a little bit of information on the front end. First, several people have asked whether and why the city hasn't imposed rent control. So I wanted to ask our law director to share with council and members of the community what the law is that prevents us from doing that.
Mayor, the state legislature has adopted an entire chapter of the state code with regard to the subject of rent control. It is at 6635-102, and the primary part of that statute starts off, "A local governmental unit shall not enact, maintain, or enforce an ordinance or resolution that would have the effect of controlling the amount of rent charged for leasing private residential or commercial property." So it's preempted by the state is the short answer to that question.
So councilmembers and members of the audience here present today, thank you for coming, or those who are watching remotely. It is not allowed in the state of Tennessee for municipalities to impose rent control. However, I do want to let people know that there are resources out there for people in crisis. First, if you or someone you know is in need of making a rental payment and need help, you can call 211 to connect with organizations who may be able to assist you. So that's just calling 211 during business hours. If you are facing eviction, please know your rights and know the process. Just because you received an eviction notice does not mean you have to leave immediately. And please show up for any court appearances. Also, we have listed on our city website, Resources for Renters, at KnoxvilleTN.gov/renterresources to connect with informations and organizations that can help you navigate and avoid eviction. And we just updated that page today, and so there's the most current information available for those struggling to pay their rent and stay in their homes. That's the short-term solutions that we have available. Obviously, this council is very familiar with the long-term efforts that we are making promoting affordable and workforce housing development, offering pilots for low-income housing tax credits, promoting Missing Middle, and many others. So that's going to continue to be a priority for me as mayor, as I know it will be for this council, and I appreciate all of our partners who are working creatively and with urgency to address housing affordability in Knoxville. Last, I want to do a quick reminder on our rules of decorum. For those who wish to speak either to a specific agenda item or during public forum, please sign up with the city recorder, Mr. Johnson, ahead of time. Please do not use profanity, and when speaking to specific agenda items, please remember to stay on topic. Those who fail to adhere to these rules may be ruled out of order and asked to step away from the podium. For those who are listening, please note that you may not disrupt a public meeting from the audience; those who do may be asked to leave. Thank you in advance for respecting these rules. And that concludes my mayor's report. Are there reports of councilmembers or committees? Vice Mayor Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. As we heard in the invocation, just wanted to remind everybody here and maybe watching at home that our city elections are upon us. Early voting begins tomorrow, August the 9th, and goes through August the 24th, so make sure you look up those convenient hours and locations for early voting. Also, primary election day is August 29th, so please make sure you get out and let your voice be heard and vote in our elections. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Roberto. Councilmember Singh?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to speak to what you were talking about with rents going up and housing prices and, you know, we all know that this is in a crisis state. I know all of us are getting phone calls that are just people sobbing, people not knowing what they're going to do next. It's about, we're about 10,000 houses from living spaces from bringing this to an affordable city again. We are going to have to make some really hard decisions on zoning that are going to make our constituents very angry, and I hope that we all have the courage to do that. You know, at this point, it feels like we have people who have and people who will never have, and it's, you know, the income inequality and the housing inequality in Knoxville is, we hear about it every single day, and we've got to do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other lights on from councilmembers, we'll move on to item 8.
8A is a resolution confirming the appointment of Ashley Ramos to the Knoxville Animal Control Board.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
9A is an ordinance approving the request of Victor Jernigan for an amendment to the Central City Sector Plan from medium density residential office to mixed-use special district Sutherland Northside for property located at 522 and 524 Victory Street, 6th District.
Move to approve. Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Oh, has someone signed up to speak? Mr., oh, I'm sorry, we have someone signed up to speak on this agenda item, Rick Roach? Come to the podium and please state your name and address for the record. You'll have up to five minutes.
Got three items pertaining to petitions by Victor Jernigan. Can we, can you just put those all together, and I'll speak at the end to save time?
You can speak now, or you signed up for 9B and C? I mean, it's up to you if you want to speak now or speak at 9B or 9C. Whatever you prefer.
Let's do it. I'm for, you know, anything that provides housing. That being said, as you preemptively spoke to the issue, there are a bunch of people here who are from the Tanglewood apartment community, and they've been going through a whole bunch of stuff. And a lot of them have found a way to come together and voice their common concerns. But that being said, just knowing that you have resources that may or may not be available, because I'm a renter, and only reason that I have a roof over my head right now is because of the compassion shown to us by a particular individual, and, but that's not the case with a lot of people who reside at properties that are owned and/or run by Rand in particular. And that's the problem, because we've been talking about affordable housing, we've been talking about housing availability. This is not even a three-, five-year, or five-year, even 10-year situation. This has been building up continually for at least 20 years, and we've had multiple opportunities to help alleviate this type of situation. We just have not, the city of Knoxville has not taken this by the horns, and it's now coming back to haunt us. You want growth, you want development, you focus on particular areas, the high-revenue end areas of development, and then you find hard-working people getting pushed out. You find veterans on disability getting pushed out or being scared to death that they're going to get pushed out. All the time, they're having to deal with management that is not responsive to their needs. All they're interested in is bringing in the money, and there's no accountability. And I don't know what you, as city council, and the mayor and administration can do to alleviate this situation and bring some relief to folks like the folks at Tanglewood. I don't know exactly what you can do. Well, no, I do know what you can do, and it hadn't been done. Let's be honest. Okay? It hadn't been done, because you had that focus, again, on the high-end, high-revenue areas of development, okay? And Mayor, to be honest with you, when you did a post on your Facebook page about you're proud to ride the bus, and I'll be talking about that later on, about riding the bus, okay? Knowing the general area in which you live, your easiest straight route route to come to work, if you're going to ride the bus, is the 22 Broadway Bus. The only reason I know that is because I've ridden every freaking route that CAT offers, okay, for a long time. I don't do it now, I have a vehicle available to me. However, back in the day, that was my primary, 95% of my transportation needs were met by CAT, okay? So that means you would have to come down and come through an area that illustrates to you the need for affordable housing, the need to take care of the least of these. And I've used this word before, before you guys. They're called the Anowim, okay? They're the working poor. They're the people who, you know, they give up and they have an expectation of life, but, you know, our city government has not been responsive. Let's be honest, okay? The first time you had a cage set up, that should give you an indication. And you're getting ready to have a whole bunch of other people who have to worry about that type of situation, okay? Because they're being pushed out by money-hungry people who don't give a damn about them. Bottom line, okay? And you guys got to figure something out about how to give them some relief.
Council, that concludes the people signed up to speak on item 9A. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for your words, Rick. I agree with what Rick had to share tonight. And what I wanted to comment on this agenda item is, this is an item that came before us, approved by the Planning Commission, but did not receive the approval of planning staff. And usually, I do like to follow the recommendations of planning staff, but in this situation, they did not approve this development because there was a study that hasn't been conducted of this area. But there is some anticipation that this is the direction that this area would move In general, we are going to have to make some tough zoning decisions, and I want us to make smart decisions and ensure that we have, you know, the infrastructure in place that we need to support new developments. But at times, like the issue before us currently, we may need to act as a legislative body, even when we haven't been able to get the studies in place to warrant this action. It also reminds me that we do have limited staffing still dedicated to various issues related to planning and plans and review to help these developments move forward. So I just wanted to take this opportunity, this is on second reading, but I didn't speak about it at the last meeting, just to say that this is an example of, you know, new innovative projects that we need to see in our community and that have been slowed down because we haven't had the capacity to implement these studies, but I'm in support of it.
Thank you. Councilmember Testerman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I want to reiterate as well, you know, I drive by this particular property on a daily basis, and the street is, and where this proposed development is going or these proposed residences are going is virtual blight as it is. And so, you know, again, going back to what our law director said, I mean, we're, our hands are tied on some things, and, you know, developers are not the bad guys. I mean, there are a lot of developers that are committed to affordable housing and are committed to workforce housing and, you know, specifically in this case. And so I think there are some people out there that are genuinely invested, but I agree, I mean, we are in a crisis, and it's time to move forward and look at things earnestly and how we can come to some better solutions. But on this particular item, I think this is a good proposal. It's a growing area, and what's currently there is really in disrepair.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, so I also, until quite recently, drove by these every single day. These have been vacant houses for about eight years. They're condemned. Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
I know part of the discussion at the Planning Commission was the nature of the zoning, because instead of a residential zone, it's a commercial zone, because it allows you to do slightly different, maybe more units. I don't recall our exact conversation about that, but what is your anticipation of how many units of housing will be here where we've had no occupancy for at least eight years about, that I recall?
Currently, seven. Again, Garrett Jernigan, 5246 Bent River Boulevard, Knoxville, Tennessee. So when the properties were purchased, there were only, there were three structures on the property that were already, we bought them when they were already boarded up by the city from the previous owners, had let them, there was a woman who had lived there for many, many years and kept the property up, but when she passed, for one reason or another, the properties went into disrepair. I don't really know the history of it, but when we bought them, they were already boarded up by the city. So right now, the plan is to put seven units back onto the property with, you know, with parking in the rear. And so what the CG2 zone allows for more flexibility is to where to place the units and how we can get vehicles in and around at the rear. The problem with the existing zone was the set, even though it allowed for, technically allows for fourplexes in the zone, once you get the setbacks installed on the property, it really limits what you can do on a small infill lot like we're working on.
Okay. And then I believe part of your conversation with the planning staff was the design guidelines also come with this, to ensure that it has windows.
Correct.
The doors also have to face the street. I can't remember those particulars.
Yeah, correct. And yeah, so it's, and it just, you know, flexibility in how we get, how we can get these things or how we can get the units onto the property, it just allows for more creative design.
Okay. And what's your timeframe?
We'd like to start immediately.
But what's your timeframe from when they'll be occupiable? Ballpark?
Ballpark this time next year.
Building construction. About a year construction.
I mean, depending on the, you know, obviously, whether we're heading into bad weather season, so.
Okay. It's been a wet summer.
Yeah.
Okay. And Councilmember Parker, your light's on. Okay. Seeing no further questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
9B is an ordinance approving the request of Victor Jernigan for a one-year plan amendment from medium-density residential office to mixed-use special district Sutherland Northside for property located at 522 and 524 Victory Street, 6th District.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Mr. Roach, did you, you signed up to speak to this? Please come to the podium, and you can have up to five minutes.
Rick Roach, Knoxville again. Again, I'm going to keep harping on this as I've got the opportunity to speak to it. I've been to Planning Commission meetings in the past when it was Metropolitan Planning Commission, and there is a process in place right now which is totally exclusionary to the people who are going to benefit from having a roof over their head, okay? And for people who want to maybe start a business. We went through the whole thing about RECODE. We went through this whole thing, okay? I remember that first meeting at, or the meeting that I first attended at Central United. And remember we had, you remember we had that NAC reunion group there and everything? Lo and behold, a former city council person was there, and I was warned that this was a bunch of hoodoo. That RECODE was not going to do it, okay? Because people had not been truly included, and they weren't dealing with the whole process, okay, of, you know, from the Planning Commission to coming to county commission and city council. And, you know, I'm not privy to all the insider information, okay? Most of us aren't, okay? But noticing the process, it was obviously an exclusionary process. People's voices weren't being heard. And now we have what we have now. You have people coming for the first time to a city council meeting, some of whom didn't even know where the city-county building was, but they knew they had to be here, okay? Because they're being threatened with not having a roof over their head or not being able to have a roof over their head, okay? This is what it's come to. Now, again, I'm for development, and I'm not here specifically, I'm for any developer that provides housing, okay, but at an affordable rate. And I've been given a slight lecture about the fact that most developers have no control over cost of development, okay? So now they come before you guys, the Planning Commission, and I don't know what the recommendation was from the Planning Commission. Was it an 11-0 or whatever, a straight approval, okay? Comes before you guys for approval, and lo and behold, Victor's going to get it. And that's good. That's all well and good. Bottom line, though, is, okay, the people that need the housing the most aren't going to be affected. If they are going to be affected, it's going to be in a negative way, okay? This has been going on forever, and you can't say we haven't noticed that it was going on. You can't say we weren't paying attention, okay? You can't say that. You guys have been around too long, okay? You've been too involved at community levels to not have said, "This is what's coming down the pike. This is what's going to happen." I'm going to put forth a premise here. I'm going to, I'm going to give you a premise. Some of you, most of you want to act like you give a damn, okay? But the result is, it feels like you don't, okay? Whether you do or not, it feels like you don't, okay? And it's a very frustrating thing, because I've talked to and worked with and been in the same room with a lot of you, okay? I've supported a few of you, okay? And man, these are some hard times, and if we don't figure this thing out quickly, if there is not some boldness, if there is not some vision, okay? And you guys have the skills and the expertise, and you know the people who have the skills and the expertise, okay? But you have to understand, you're not going to do it for the people who already have the most. That's got to end. That's got, that's over with, okay? That has to end, because if you don't do it, you're going to have a lot of people knocking at your door who are in need, I mean, literally knocking at your doors, okay? And they're going to ask you why things haven't been done, okay? And they're right down the road here, people. They're right down the road.
Council, that concludes the people who signed up to speak on item 9B. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. In that last discussion, it really struck me that this development will be finished in a year. And it just made me think, how many other projects that are actually affordable? You know, this is, you know, not reserved for affordable housing, but what if we put a plan in place and we're able to produce, chip away at that 10,000 affordable housing stock need that we have, and we were able to produce a significant level? level of new affordable housing? And what I see other cities do is flow to bond. And this bond can be available for new construction, and it can be a no-interest loan. It can be a grant. But that can be money that that is provided. It's the lowest interest rate on the market is are these government bonds. And instead of just providing funding to provide that gap funding for projects, we could actually make a significant amount of 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 funding available for developers to move forward with affordable housing projects that they could deliver on within a year. That is something that I feel is in within our ability. We have a, I think we still have a AAA bond rating. I'm not sure how the baseball stadium has impacted that yet, but we have a strong bond rating, which means we will have a low interest rate, much lower than what developers have access to in the market. And that might be something that is able to move projects forward, and we can be able to celebrate the affordable housing projects that will be finished within a year, not just those that will come to our community at market rate and potentially increase other housing prices in the area around it. So that would be my recommendation is that we look for solutions that we can employ today that would be able to push affordable housing development forward, and we can see the results of it a year from now.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to go to ask our Finance Director, Director Evans. Do you recall, I think this number is correct, in this year's budget, don't we invest seven and a half, almost seven and a half million dollars in affordable housing?
Boy Seven CFO for the city. That is correct. It's like $100,000 shy of 7.5 million.
And there's specifically two and a half million in affordable rental housing. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay. And I think that we've heard a lot about, you know, missing middle, and that's been a discussion, and that'll be something we have a workshop on coming up. And to get to, you know, what my colleague, Councilmember Singh, had mentioned about that, I think there are some things that we're going to have to look at. The there's not a lot of property that we're talking about that exists. Where as we go through today's agenda, we're going to see a lot of, you know, challenged properties that are looking to be developed on. And so that's what we're left with there. You had mentioned a number, which I think is correct, about needing about 10,000 units. And I think that's a right number. We do need to get some significant numbers like that. We're not going to find that in existing, you know, empty spaces or even in missing middle. The solution is going to be in using our TIPS and pilots to build mixed-use development along the corridors where we have existing businesses now, and we can have residential units there. That is a place where we have the infrastructure to do to support this, and there is space in existing businesses to do it. We don't need to borrow money to do that. We have existing incentives that can encourage that. And so I know counsel has discussed this many times, and I think this is part of the continuing discussion we will have, is that we need to continue to do that so that good folks, hardworking folks, like the people who've come here today, who are in a very bad spot, who are saying, hey, find something to help us. We can do stuff. We heard early on from the mayor about phone numbers that can be called, about people you can get assistance from, and I think that's good, and I would encourage folks to do that. In the long run and even in the short run, what we need to be doing is making sure that we take advantage of the things that we did in RECODE, which was to provide space for that mixed use. And we need to encourage it and make sure it happens so that we can start building the units that we really need to help the folks out that are here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas.
Yes, I want to echo a lot of what my colleague just said. I didn't know he was going to bring that point up, but it was very well taken. And Mr. Roach talked about how it's time for some bold action. And I think that's true. And I think that's we're going to have to look at different ways of finding locations for housing. And traditionally, the Knoxville administrations, like administrations in many cities, have taken kind of a passive approach to where development occurs. And it's basically kind of been driven by where developers can develop conveniently. And lots of that times, that's in neighborhoods where there is a limited amount of space. And I think we really need to take a bold approach and start looking at our corridors where there is a lot of blighted property there. The infrastructure is there. There's a customer base for the businesses when your residence is there. There's opportunity for employment at those businesses. And people who would have an opportunity to live on the corridors, it would be a better quality of life because the the infrastructure is there and transportation is there. It wouldn't be easy to do. It's going to take a shift in a paradigm. But I think we really, really need to look at that because the space is limited, and we also need to protect the fabric of our neighborhoods as well. And when you overtax neighborhoods with infrastructure or when you overtax with there's infrastructure is not there to support it, there's what I call collateral damage. There's talk about healthy neighborhoods. That means mental health. That means less crime. And human beings weren't made to live in some ways that over dense housing without the ability to to get out into nature or to take transportation. We're not designed to live that way without adverse effects on our quality of life and our mental health and aggressiveness and whatever. So I think we really need to take a bold look at these blighted areas on our corridors. I think Councilperson Ryder in the last city council, maybe it was a workshop, talked about all the places on Broadway that had been abandoned by retail stores that had gone out of business. A lot of that retail is not going to come back because people are doing a lot of their shopping online. But what that gives us is an opportunity to develop these areas and do it in a way that doesn't negatively impact existing neighborhoods. So I encourage that we start thinking outside the box and take some some bold steps. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. I'm not sure who was first between Ms. Singh and Ms. Ryder. Ms. Ryder.
Sure. Well, since my colleagues brought up commercial, so I feel like RECODE is being thrown around like a four-letter word and is a little bit confusing. RECODE is where we because I know a lot of people here for their first time. It's where we revised the zoning code for the first time in 50 years. And we allowed uses that were not allowed previously before. We made it so you could have smaller lots. Not you, per se, but a house could be on a smaller lot. So a lot of our older houses became legal on their current lots. We made it so that you could have carriage houses or garage apartments because that was actually not allowed previously in the previous zoning code. And we also made it so that without a rezoning, you could add residential to commercial zones. And that is why you have the new apartments. Now, they don't have fixed rents, and there's a chapter in the state code that tells us we can't fix the rent unless they come to us and ask for some kind of subsidy. There's a whole new apartment complex across from the Home Depot there at Washington Pike that did not require rezoning, and that's because of RECODE. There the movie theater, as Councilman Thomas pointed out, the movie theater has closed there at I-640 and Millertown Pike. And yes, I've got complaints about the movie theater closing as well as the future redevelopment of that parcel. But it is also going to be several hundreds of new apartments. And that is the issue that we have here. We have 10 jugs of milk and 25 people trying to buy them. We have too many people. We have a lot of people that have come to move to Knoxville. New students. UT has increased double-digit their enrollment, but they didn't build housing. They rented hotels last year to put their students. They told their students to go home. They didn't make a plan for where their students were going to go. So those students are willing to pay 1,200 and up for an apartment. And that's directly impacted all of you because those landlords are now like, well, I don't have to house you. I can get 1,200 and up for a student. And I get it. I get it. But we can't go in. I am more than happy to sit down and have a conversation with whoever bought your complex. I'm not sure that it will make a difference, but we can't legally tell them they can't raise it. But what I want to say to my colleagues and people who want to talk about RECODE is there were successes out of that. I'm getting two apartment complexes, or we are all getting two apartment complexes in the areas that are no longer commercial in the 4th District. The RECODE changes didn't get proposed until to get started in 2017, and they didn't go into effect until the beginning of 2019. And as we all know, 2020 was not a booming time for construction. So we have this lag and delay. Maybe the answer is we should have revised our zoning code prior to 2018, 2017. But none of us were up here then and weren't able to make that happen any faster than it happened. So I think most people on this council have voted for the new housing that we have coming in. Most of our votes have been unanimous. Mr. Bentley is there at the back of the room, not to throw him out there, but I think we have hundreds of new units coming. We've increased many hundreds of new units coming in a couple of other developments that KCDC does as well as Western Heights. And all of these new units come in and increase the volume of units that we have. And that's why we're looking at different ways to increase the amount of housing that we have on existing vacant land, on commercial land. People are working from home on their Wi-Fi now. They're not going into these office buildings. So how can some of that stuff become residential? And we're not the only city that's having this thing, this issue. People are moving to cities in larger numbers. And so I think one of the things that we're missing from this is the personal factors from your individual stories, like what was your rent changed to? And this isn't necessarily the best forum to talk about that, but I'd love to talk to some of you about what got changed about your rent and your current situation and see how we can help you. But I appreciate you guys bringing up the commercial, and I know of two success stories.
Councilmember Singh.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to address a couple of different things. One, I think I was misunderstood when I was talking about my regrets with RECODE. A lot of people did a lot of work. We were here till midnight, and we were just the, you know, the council. I know that staff, it was years and years of hard work. And I do not not insulting that. I'm just saying there's there's more we could have done. And as I had said earlier, I was new on council. I wish I knew some of the things then that I know now that I would have pushed for. We did a lot of work. We did a lot of good work. So please understand that that's where I'm coming from. As far as building around corridors and where there's more infrastructure, absolutely, that's absolutely something that's important. What I don't want is for us to be just focused on that because of the sacred cow, and I am Hindu, so I can say that, the sacred cow of single-family homes. You know, I don't quite understand what tearing up the fabric of a neighborhood is by adding density. That doesn't. I don't I think it falls into NIMBYism more than wrecking neighborhoods. But I'd love to hear what you have to say.
I guarantee you, it does not generally fall into the area of NIMBYism. And I've lived in my neighborhood for over 30 years, and it's basically a working-class neighborhood. And the opposition, and I speak generally in my district, is when neighborhoods are concerned about over-dense development where the infrastructure there is not to support it. I don't get any indication that it's based on people of lower economic status, color, race. I represent probably the most diverse demographic in the city. If you take the Hispanics, there's Guatemalans in Lonsdale, there's African Americans, and people, I think, are often too ready to play the card of NIMBYism when neighborhoods have valid objections to being overwhelmed with density. And many, many times, I have been in issues where a developer comes in, they want to put X amount of apartments in there. The neighborhood will meet with the developer and say, we understand growth. We know that things are going to change, but scale it down just a little bit. Scale it down so it won't overwhelm the schools. There's no sidewalks that people can walk, et cetera. So I would probably be about the first one, actually, to object if I thought some of my neighborhoods were basing some of their opposition on minority discrimination or even more important economic class. So.
I'm very, very happy to hear that that's been your experience. It has not been mine.
Councilmembers, just a couple of points of information I thought would be helpful to this discussion and to, you know, people who are listening. First, in the second quarter of this year, there's over 3,200 units of housing under construction. It's an all-time high, an all-time high of number of units under construction right now. This community is not waiting. We're not waiting. The private developing community is just trying to move forward and building housing because they they want to meet that demand. As far as, you know, subsidized housing, KCDC, as many some of you were able to attend the groundbreaking last week, they're going to over, you know, transforming Western is going to not only just transform that community and bring a new park and and other amenities and and replace and update the existing housing. It's going to add 300 new homes at Western Heights. That's in process. We broke the ground last week. There's also over 300 new homes that have been added or in the process of being added at First Creek at Austin. So we are, as a community, as a government and the private sector, working to fill this gap right now. We're not we're not waiting. I think it's also important, something we're working on, we've already made some progress, is removing the sludge. You know, to the extent that developers encounter slowdowns with our permitting process, with plans review and so forth, we are actively listening and learning and adopting adding staff, adding software and making that process easier. Because once someone has made that investment, you know, like like the issue on the agenda right now, you want to be able to help them move forward expeditiously and add more housing, affordable housing particularly, but all increase to the supply of housing is going to help the overall disparity between supply and demand. And also, I just think it's important to remember affordability is about the supply of housing and the cost of rent, but it's also about incomes. And so, you know, I think it's up to our employers to also consider raising salaries for people because you people, the labor market's different now than it was a couple of years ago, and employees have more power than they used to because there's not been there are not enough people to work. So I encourage people who are experiencing a rental crisis to seek those resources at 211 and the website I mentioned, but also consider asking your employers for a raise. They might need you more than you think. Any other questions or comments by council? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine C is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification for property located at 522 and 524 Victory Street from RN 4 District to CG 2 District. Victor Jernigan, applicant 6th District.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Tom Ruggles signed up to speak on this item. Mr. Ruggles.
My name is Tom Ruggles, live in District 2. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yep.
Awesome. So, you know, I like some So, you know, I like some of the discussion that's at least being had today, and I don't doubt that you guys have made some efforts to build housing over the past few years. But it appears from my perspective that a lot of this housing has not really been focused around, you know, low and low-income folks, has been not, I think maybe we have different definitions of what affordable housing is, because to me, $1,200 one-bedroom apartment is not affordable. To me, you know, $900, $1,000, maybe that's a bit more affordable. And if you look across the city of Knoxville right now, you can't find any apartments for that rate. And if you do, you're going to be waiting for about a year at least to get those. So we're really in the middle of a crisis right now. And so I just want to outline, you know, a couple of statistics about the nature of the crisis that we're in, particularly with the rental units. And so, you know, we've seen the average rent price for new leases go up about 60% over the past few years. The average rent in Knoxville is currently approaching $1,500 a month. And to afford that reasonably, someone would have to make around $60,000 a year. However, the median income of individuals in Knox County is only $36,000 a year. And so the average individual, the average individual can't afford that. In fact, at $36,000 a year, $900 a month is right on the line of affordability. And so that's what we need to be targeting building. And I'm just not seeing it happen. It seems to me that the use of the pilot program has been abused to build, you know, middle-to-upper-class housing. We're giving tax cuts to these rich developers when they're not giving back to the people in the community that really need it most. So I would really like to encourage the council here to, you know, utilize that program for lower-income housing, and also to take on some other ideas, such as the one Ms. Parker laid forth, and also things like community land trusts, where the community can have some say in what they're paying for their rent. Because I understand the limitations that the council has here in regards to the state law, which is absolute BS. But I know y'all can't do nothing about that. And so, you know, me as a renter, I'm really starting to feel it. I know my friends in the audience are really starting to feel it. And there's some folks not in the room today that are also feeling it. Our houseless population here in Knoxville has raised considerably over the past few years. Our brothers and sisters down there are really struggling, and, you know, that is directly tied to what we're seeing with the rental increases. As the rents raise, as people can't afford it, as they get kicked out of their homes, where are they going to go? They end up under the bridge on Broadway down there. And by going down there for the past two years, handing out food every Sunday, I've watched the population there firsthand continue to rise, continue to rise. And it's really just sad to see, and it makes me very concerned for my friends and my neighbors, how soon is it going to be until we're in that boat? And so I'd like to encourage y'all to really start to think seriously and take this as a, as a crisis that it is, and we need to get this situation solved on a matter of, you know, a year or two, rather than some of these longer-term solutions that we've been talking about. So with that, I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Next person signed up to speak on 9C is Rick Roach. Mr. Roach.
Wow. See, I'm looking at it, and I just thought I heard somebody kind of argue the opposite of what you see in Item C. An ordinance to change the base zoning classification for property located at 522 and 524 Victory Street from RN4, general residential neighborhood district to CG2, general commercial district. So we're taking units, potential units, off the residential side, reallocating for commercial purpose. At least that's what the request is. That's the kind of, I'm going to use my word, shenanigans that has been going on continuously over the last 15 years. And now it's coming back to bite the city in the butt. And we cannot, they cannot, the people I know cannot continue to deal with this. I mean, listen, I've seen Mr. Bentley back there, and we've had a few conversations in the past couple of years. Uh, hm. Seema, my niece, you helped her maneuver. And I don't know what strings you pulled, but she wasn't in a position to move from a dangerous KCDC-run facility to the new Austin home scenario, I'll call it a scenario. And I'm going to be honest with you, that's just face paint. That's just makeup. Okay? It solved her problem, but it illustrates what if you don't know somebody, if you don't know somebody, you could be out on the street, or you could be living in a situation in which your life literally is endangered because the communities that, or the community that you may live in is a dangerous place to live. And that brings in other aspects of housing and livability, in particular, communities. The policing, the access to services, healthcare in particular. Keep in mind, keep in mind, keep in mind, there's no medical services east of downtown. None. You can count, if you want to count Cherokee over on MLK, don't. Okay? It's nothing, comparatively speaking, nothing. So the lack of vision, the lack of foresight is coming back to bite Knoxville in the butt. And the only reason that it's happening is because most of the people are in the normal categories of poor or working poor, people of color, historically black communities, okay? This is the truth of the matter. I've been here, I've lived this my whole life, and I've seen it in other cities across this country. I'm not, I'm not making this up. I've lived it. And you all act like, well, it's a big problem, we got to get it solved, okay, we got to do something now. Okay? Yeah. Election time for a few of you. Election time, you better wake up. Okay? We're not putting up with the shenanigans anymore, we're not doing it. Okay? We can't, it's not storytime. Once upon a time, there was a whole community of black people and a whole community of working folk, and woe and behold, they were working hard, and then one day, the big bad landlord came and, phew, 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 and blew their houses down. Come on. All right? We are shooting ourselves in the foot. And then we're hobbling over and saying, you know what, since I got one bad foot, I might as well do the other one. That's it. I mean, that's all I got for you. Okay? And I'm sorry to use such a messed-up analogy, but this is crisis time, people, this is crisis time. No more waterfront, anything of that nature, people. We need to concentrate on the people in need.
Counsel, that concludes people signed up to speak on 9C. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor, please say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Thomas.
Just a brief comment that the agenda item that we're voting on actually...
Can't hear you, Charlie.
I'm sorry. That the agenda item, but, excuse me, the agenda item that we are now voting on actually adds multi-unit housing and density to this space. It doesn't turn it into a commercial space. So anybody that's in opposition to this because they think that it's depriving opportunity for more housing is just mistaken. We're actually adding with this unit...
Double.
A double, and we're changing it from single-family residence to multi-unit housing. And, you know, everybody knows I'm an advocate of single-family residences in many instances, but every piece of property is different. And I've surveyed this one, even though it's zoned single-family residence, multi-use units are appropriate here. So I just don't want any misconception that may have been said, that, that we're taking away residential property in this agenda item and turning it into commercial property. That's exactly almost the opposite of what we're doing.
Thank you. Counselmember Parker.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for that clarification for the audience, Councilmember Thomas. I do think it's a valid concern, and it's one that also that we should be mindful of because this is a mixed-use development with residential units, but we are changing the zoning that could allow for other developments. So we're happy with this development, but we're changing the zoning that could allow for other developments. So I think it's something for us to be mindful of. And I wanted to echo some of the other thoughts shared. You know, if we don't want to float a bond, community land trust or another strategy that we should consider and move forward with, and we have our Homemakers Program, and I've brought this up at meetings before, and I'm happy to see the project on our agenda does restrict the income of the, of the project to those making 80% area median income or below. And so I applaud that, that is the focus of this project that's coming before us, it's later in the agenda for those following along. But what I did want to say is, you know, I believe we can move at a quicker pace, that we can invest more money. I think currently the homes that are coming into the Homemakers Program are usually blighted properties that we are putting up for sale. And I think that we can be a bit more proactive in identifying properties around the city that we can go ahead and acquire and put into our quote-unquote "land bank" or the Homemakers Program. Other cities have, actually, I think the state of Ohio, put funding aside early in the pandemic to almost compete with developers who were coming into the state, to buy up property before they could get to it, so that they could offer it for sale at a reasonable rate. And I believe we're at that point when we are on list where we're the number one or in the top five cities with rising rents. We have to take bold actions like that. We can't keep doing the same things that we've done and relying on TIFs and pilots, relying on a limited affordable housing fund is what we've always done, at least for the last several years. And I believe for us to take those bold moves, especially if we want to develop along the corridors, that's some of the most expensive property that we have in the city. So I can imagine those projects would be able to move along more quickly if the city prioritized them, not only for potentially financial incentives and support for development, but also acquiring those properties so that we can incorporate them into our Homemakers Program and begin to develop some sort of community land trust program. I really think we're at that point. We've talked since the beginning of Recode about the limited land that we have in the city. We need to make decisions understanding that there's limited land in our city and understanding that that limited land has to be available to the low-income members who are the majority of our city. So I just wanted to keep pushing, that we take bold steps, that we do something different, and that we actually make it a priority to ensure in a short timeline that we are producing the affordable housing units that we need. We cannot just rely on more supply, reducing those rents. We have people moving here in the thousands from higher-income areas. As the mayor said, many of folks are living and working from home, so they find it very convenient to live here where the taxes are low, and it was at one point very affordable. And so that's what our residents are competing with, and I do not want our residents to get pushed out of the city. And in order for us to prevent that, we've got to take bold action. And that's going to require more than $7.5 million invested in affordable housing.
Mr. Thomas, your light's on. Yeah.
And yes, I just wanted to quickly underline some of the things that Councilperson Parker said. We are really challenged because a lot of what's going on here is the results of a national market. And for years, Knoxville was very affordable, it's a very affordable place. Now it's a better place for a lot of people to live, and people, as Ms. Parker said, are coming in here from other parts of the country and where they can sell their property there and buy here much cheaper, and it's a bargain to them, but they're driving up the cost of housing here. So that's just a reality, and that's a huge challenge for us. And we will, we'll keep working on it. I appreciate all the comments, we're all honestly trying to discuss this and work through, but just the context of this national market and people coming in here, getting good deals for them, but driving up the cost for people who are from here and have lived here, it's a fact, and it's, it's really hard to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11A is a resolution respectfully requesting Knoxville Knox County planning consider and make a recommendation to the Knoxville City Council and the Historic Zoning Commission regarding the possible addition of an historic or neighborhood conservation overlay to the residential parcels fronting on Gibbs Drive, bounded on the north by Overlet, excuse me, Essery Drive, bounded on the south by the near property lines, excuse me, the rear property lines of properties fronting Gibbs Drive, bounded on the east by Jack Spurra Pike, and bounded on the west by the, by North Broadway, and including parcels ID numbers 058EH034, 058EB02601, and 058EJ01202.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, there are two people signed up to speak in favor of this item. First is Marcus Chady. You could come to the podium, start by stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Thank you. Marcus Chady, 2841 Gibbs Drive and 414 Plinch Avenue. The first address is straightforward enough, as I'm a resident of historic Gibbs Drive and am here to speak in support of that matter. The second address is relevant because it is the address of Studio 4 Design, where I am principal architect and partner. I wish to speak to you with my frame of reference in mind. My office is located in Sandstone Court, historic building designated as Stop Number 65 on the Knox Heritage Downtown Walking Tour. My home is located on Gibbs Drive, a location listed on the National Register of Historic Places. I value historic preservation. As a former chair of the Knox County Board of Zoning Appeals, I also value zoning. I appreciate the city council and the mayor's office for many years has also valued historic preservation and zoning, as evidenced by the work of the Historic Zoning Commission and historic preservation planners. I've known this to be a priority in Knoxville for a long time, dating back over 20 years, as I previously worked with Ann Bennett and Kay Grabiel. Before we moved to Gibbs Drive, the first home that my wife and I purchased was on Emerland Drive. The benefit of that neighborhood's historic zoning overlay and design guidelines is ever... The benefit of that neighborhood's historic zoning overlay and design guidelines is evidenced by the beautiful streetscape of restored historic homes. Residents found historic renovation to suddenly be affordable and within their reach, thanks to the resources and guidance that became availed to the neighborhood once a zoning overlay was applied. More recently, I've had the pleasure of working with Lindsay Crockett on downtown commercial projects, and I've attended her presentations at two historic Gibbs Drive neighborhood meetings. I'm confident in Lindsay's qualifications and capabilities to further study the possibility of a historic zoning overlay for my neighborhood. I ask that you support this resolution to authorize further study. I look forward to the steps that remain for City Council, Knox Planning, and my neighborhood towards seeing the same success in historic preservation on Gibbs Drive that I have experienced elsewhere in Knoxville. This is truly an attribute that makes Knoxville the best place in America to live, work, and play. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak is Monty Howard. Mr. Howard, if you would state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Monty Howard, 3016 Gibbs Drive, Knoxville. Mayor Kinncanon, members of City Council, thank you for taking time to hear our request for this resolution tonight. My name is Monty Howard. I am the co-chair of the Historic Gibbs Drive Neighborhood Association and represent the 52 homeowners of our beautiful street in Fountain City. Our association was formed in 1996 to represent the interests of our neighbors, many who have called Gibbs Drive home their entire lives. We've always been a close-knit community that has sought to protect the historic integrity, charm, and character of our special street. In fact, in 1999, with help from Knox Heritage, we applied for and received approval, as Marcus Chady has just said, to be listed on the National Registry of Historic Places. In that application, Knox Heritage highlights the uniqueness of Gibbs Drive as a historic community, and I quote, "The Gibbs Drive Historic District retains a high degree of architectural integrity. Only six of the 52 primary buildings are non-contributing. It is a unique Knoxville example of a transition into the automobile era of the late 1920s. Of the 52 residences, 40 were built prior to 1930, 11 between 1930 and 1950. The importance of Gibbs Drive as an excellent example of early-to-mid 20th century architecture in Knoxville is undeniable. It retains integrity unlike few Knoxville neighborhoods. The houses are in good to excellent condition, perhaps a tribute to the long-term occupancy of many of its residents. We believe it is important to the character of not only our neighborhood but the heritage of the city of Knoxville at large to preserve and protect the deep roots and history as a symbol of Knoxville's past. We are a modest collection of small to medium working-class homes with unique style and craftsmanship typical of early architecture in Knoxville, and it's our hope that a historic overlay will protect our neighborhood from homes being demolished and replaced with newer, larger, and more costly dwellings, or for that matter expansive renovations and additions not fitting of a community like ours." As far as public input, in the last two years, we've held public meetings to discuss the overlay beginning in January, where Lindsay Crockett of Knox Planning presented information about historic zoning to her residents. We emailed that video of the presentation out to those who are unable to attend and opened a forum of discussion and questions. We have since emailed that same video of her presentation and subsequent discussion in its entirety on three additional occasions. In December of last year, we sent out a letter via U.S. mail to all 52 homeowners, once again providing details regarding historic zoning and inviting them to a meeting on January 12th for more discussion and questions. 22 homes were represented. Ms. Crockett was also there, and we had a quality discussion, and the support from those in attendance was favorable. Just last week, we sent out an email soliciting any homeowner who wishes to be part of the Development and Design Guidelines so we can ensure the effort meets residents' goal of preservations. I can assure you this is and will continue to be a community-driven process. There is understandably reservation from some who wonder exactly what historic designation will mean to them personally and to the impact it will have on their ability to make future renovations or repairs of choice to their own home. We believe it is imperative we continue to the next phase of this process where we can provide tangible examples of what this looks like so that all involved can be fully informed and free to make the decision that is best for their home. As such, we respectfully request approval of this resolution to allow Knox Planning to consider and make recommendations so we may develop guidelines with community input to fully inform residents what this designation would mean and how it would benefit our neighborhood. Thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you. Councilmembers, that concludes the people signed up to speak on item 11A. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Parker, I didn't see your lights.
I was just wondering if perhaps someone from Planning or the city could explain the process. When an inquiry like this is made, and I know last time this was discussed, at some point, we were looking for signatures from members of the community to show their support or not for this. Is that automatically a part of the process, or has that just been a part of the process?
It's not automatically a part of the process, but yes. Amy Brooks, Knoxville Knox County Planning. Ms. Crockett is here, and typically these requests originate with her, so if she's willing, come up, and she can walk you through the process of how she handles these when they come in.
Sure. I'm happy to talk about the process. I'm Lindsay Crockett with Knoxville Knox County Planning. So what the phase you guys are seeing is a little bit later in the process. We like to initiate these conversations with public meetings with the neighborhood groups, typically multiple public meetings to discuss the overall concepts of the historic and neighborhood conservation overlays. And then we bring it in front of City Council to make it a formal public process, to initiate that with Knox Planning, and put it on our work program. The process then involves an architectural survey of the area, so we create an architectural inventory and identify character-defining features based on preservation standards. We convene a working group for the design guidelines. So as Mr. Howard said, typically, there's a smaller group within the neighborhood that's interested in working with these guidelines. We try to engage that, offer that opportunity to everybody in the neighborhood group because it's good to get varying perspectives on all sorts of sides there to work on the guidelines. And then we begin drafting the design guidelines, so we work from the basic standards of the Secretary of the Interior standards for rehabilitation and then other neighborhoods guidelines, but we tailor each neighborhood's to the priorities of that specific neighborhood. We operate under the thought that the more neighborhood buy-in on the front end, the better. So as guidelines are drafted, we publicly share them online and hard copies in multiple locations, and then we have rounds of public meetings when the design guideline drafts are generated. So people have the opportunity, multiple steps along the way, to engage in the design guideline process. Ultimately, when the neighborhood has a general consensus, the formal public process begins. So the Historic Zoning Commission and the Planning Commission review those, which are obviously open to the public and have input there, and then they come back to council, and council would hold two hearings on that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crockett. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Parker, your light still on? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11B is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Civil and Environmental Consultants Incorporated to provide professional engineering design services for the North Cherry Street Stormwater Improvements Project for an amount not to exceed $227,400 funded with the American Rescue Plan Act grant.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, the next four items, 11B, C, D, and E, represent a significant investment in our stormwater infrastructure, thanks to the American Rescue Plan Act. These projects total $1.5 million in stabilization and design improvements that will help areas in our city with a history of flooding issues and other things. Baum Drive, Aaron Drive, North Cherry Street, and Mary Vestal Park. So after yesterday, I think we can all be reminded that flooding can be a serious issue. It's one of our biggest vulnerabilities as we address climate change. So I appreciate your support of these dollars and investments to have a long-lasting impact for generations to come. Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Civil and Environmental Consultants Incorporated to provide professional engineering design services for the Baum Drive Stormwater Improvements Project for an amount not to exceed $133,400 funded with the American Rescue Plan Act grant.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Ecosystem Planning and Restoration LLC to provide professional engineering design services for the Mary Vestal Park Stream Bank Stabilization Project in an amount not to exceed $106,781.75 funded with the American Rescue Plan Act grant.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I know this is 104, but I just want to call out that it's another investment in Vestal community that needs a lot, and I'm really grateful for the investment here, particularly for Goose Creek.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11E is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an inter-local project agreement with Knox County to provide for the design and construction of the Bluegrass Lake Stormwater Mitigation Plan Project for an amount not to exceed $987,500 funded by the American Rescue Plan Act.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Johnson, Mireyan, and Thompson Incorporated to provide design services for the Riverwalk and Two-City View Greenway Connection Project for an amount not to exceed $173,880.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed to East Tennessee Housing Development Corporation for one parcel of property located at 504 Richmond Avenue, parcel ID number 094HQ00501, within the limits of the city of Knoxville pursuant to the homemakers program for a contract sales price of $7,000.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, this item is an example of how we utilize our homemakers program to take a blighted property and get it back into our housing stock. This particular property will be redeveloped by the East Tennessee Housing Development Corporation, which provides affordable housing here in Knoxville. And this type of partnership is a common part of the homemakers program, which has seen nearly 70% of projects go specifically to support housing and programs to support low- and moderate-income families. So I want to just bring that to your attention, and I want to thank Kathy Ellis and the Housing and Neighborhood Development Team for leading this and all the other homemakers efforts. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a piggyback agreement with Averro LLC to provide enterprise resource planning to renew and improve existing software systems and development services and the Knoxville Police Department in an amount not to exceed $150,000.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, I just wanted to say, I mentioned before, and we were talking about housing, removing the sludge and addressing backlogs. Well, this is part of the effort to do that, so thank you for, hopefully, your support of this. This is going to cover some software improvements for KPD, which Chief Noel is here, if you have questions about that. But I did want to just mention, this will also help make efficiency improvements in plans, reviews, and inspections. In just this past month, our director, Peter Arons, is reporting that they have cut the backlog of permits by more than three-quarters. So they are working hard, using new tools, and also using additional tools based on your support of this tonight. So that's additional staff, that's people working overtime, and also improved processes. This software upgrade is going to just keep that positive momentum going. Any questions or discussion? Oh, Mr. Marlowe is here to speak on this, I'm sorry. Mr. Marlowe, you have up to five minutes.
Hi, R. Bentley Marlowe, 322 Douglas 37921. Yeah, we need this, we need this months ago, just this, I guess you remember, a few months ago, I had to actually carry a paper check-in to renew a permit because the system wasn't working. I've emailed you all when I went to look up a permit, and the system just pretty much gobbledygook all over my screen like something out of the Matrix. And for the last 12 days, I've been trying to renew yet another permit, and it boiled down to I had to get Peter involved, I had to have an old paper-based form emailed to me, fill it out, scan it, email it back. That's where we're at right now with this software, and that is inevitably adding to this backlog and this slow development process. So anything and everything that we can do to improve this needs to be funded and looked at. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes people signed up to speak on item 11H. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11I is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and if awarded, accept a grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation to provide funding in an amount of $1,250,000 to the city of Knoxville on behalf of Knoxville Area Transit from Improve Act Transit Investment Grant Funds for fiscal year 2024, with a city match of up to $250,000 to rehabilitate and renovate bus stops in CATS service area.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. We have several people signed up to speak on this. First is Tina Sparks. Ms. Sparks, if you could come to the podium, you'll have up to five minutes to address council. Ms. Sparks, if it's more comfortable, you can sit at one of those seats and speak into a microphone there if that's better for you.
So I'm here tonight to say, yes, this is a really good thing. Bus stops are a really good thing. And then, the more I thought about it, the more I was concerned that maybe I need to look at this just a little bit better, a little bit deeper, so I did. And I went on the CAT Reimagined website. 725 responses to the survey. 725 people in a city the size of Knoxville, this is this survey. I remembered this survey when it came out. I was living in Vestal at the time, and there was a CAT representative that came to talk to us about this. And mainly, it was about Route 45, that we were interested in, of course. So I thought about it a little bit more, and then I just, I want to use a word that my good friend, our good friend, Rick Roats, uses a lot, and that's hoodoo. This survey, now, I want to make sure that you understand, the bus stops is a wonderful Yes. But it's indicative of what a lot of things that happen here in this room by some of you, who it appears to be good on the outside, but when you start peeling it away and you get down to where it really is, it is hoodoo. It is hoodoo. Okay, now, this, number one, I just want to point out that 64% of the respondents of the 725, out of how many 300,000 folk that live in Knoxville, 300,000-plus, identified as, 64 identified as white. And 27% identified themselves as black or African-American. I find that hard to believe, I really do. I really do. I find that hard to believe. I really do. I really do. The grant is $1,250,000. And it's called Improved Transit Act, and it came into existence under our former governor, our former mayor, our former governor Haslam. And it's to reduce congestion, increase ridership, and here's the key, promote economic development. And it just speaks to everything that's going on here tonight, this here. Nothing is, everything that you all do, everything that the government does is related. You cannot separate one thing from another, and if you try to do that, no, you can't. To rehabilitate and renovate bus stops, it sounds really, really good, but you're going to be, what you're going to be doing is, you got all these fancy new buses, and I think they're wonderful, electric and all that. Of course, the poor little old trolleys are going away, and Mr. Frost, and Councilperson Ryder, you remember how much Thaksin School relied on those trolleys, especially that one that went down the strip, which I can no longer call the strip because it resembles absolutely nothing that I remember being the strip. Again, hoodoo at work. But I just want everybody, we have to ask questions, we have to look at things deeper. We can't just accept, oh, they're doing such a great thing for us. A lot of people here tonight have never been to a meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Sparks.
And they know, they have to know that, you have to keep your eyes and your ears open.
Ms. Sparks, that concludes your five minutes.
You can't always trust what you hear. It is a bunch of hoodoo.
Next person signed up to speak is Rick Roach. Mr. Roach?
Okay. Yeah, the survey, I didn't think much about the survey. You know, and the funny thing was, again, as I stated earlier, the CAT was my primary mode of transportation. And I literally rode every route. And I took the 90 cross-town, east and west, primarily East Knoxville routes, 31, 32, 33, 34. I'm going to give you a mentality overview. They were building the superstop at the Kirkwood in front of Greater Warner. This was back in the day. Come to the CAT station, I see former mayor Brown there. Hey, Dan, what's going on, man? What's going on? Hey, where you going? Uh, I'm going to the grand opening of the Kirkwood Superstop. Okay, great. Well, okay, boom. Yeah, a bunch of us going to catch a bus, the minibus, out to the grand opening. I said, a bunch of you? Yeah, city council folk, blah, 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 dignitaries, blah, 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 blah. Okay. Now, I'm riding the 34. And I had already made up my mind. I'm getting off at Greater Warner at the new superstop because the old, that location had been moved over to the next block for the people who were riding the bus every day. And when they saw me get off, I said, why don't y'all come on, y'all get off. Where you going, man? Where you going? I said, what's going on right here? Uh, they're getting ready to have the grand opening. But see, none of the riders, the people who ride the bus, were notified about this and were invited to come and celebrate the new superstop grand opening. Nobody. So I got off the bus and walked on over, and lo and behold, I was treated like a redheaded stepchild. I wasn't supposed to be there. Who are you? What do you want? Can we help you? Uh, no. And so, when the mayor, Mayor Reharo, got there, hey, Rick, what's going on? Everybody kind of changed their tone. Have to know somebody sometimes. And that's a damn shame. See, that's what we got going on here in Knoxville. Got to know somebody to get anything done. It's a damn shame. Okay? That's the attitude that prevails. So again, let's get back to the survey. The survey. What's that, Jared Walker? Is that the name of the group? Jared, they're from Portland, Oregon, surveying people in Knoxville, Tennessee about their transportation needs and what would they like to see in their world-class transportation system. Wow. 725 respondents, I'm going to say it again, 725 respondents. One route in Knoxville a year averages over 25,000 riders. And where are those people in this whole thing? Because 46% of those folk that responded, of those 725, don't ride the bus. Y'all tell me. Y'all tell me. And you're for it. Y'all tell me. Tell me. And again, we got to look at campaign pictures of our mayor standing and pointing out the 31, 32, 33, or not 32, but 33 and 34 bus stop, which is, oh, I'm proud to ride this bus. Well, that bus takes you east. It ain't nothing going on east, except for takeover, okay? Again, I like my word, my new word, hoodoo. Stop it.
The last person signed up to speak this item is Ms. Constance Everie. Ms. Everie?
Constance Everie, 37914, and the future mayor of Knoxville, Tennessee, 2023 election cycle. We are here because, yes, I am in total agreement with Ganey and Rick Roach. We know that Reimagined CAT is kind of the new initiative coming down the pipeline. And as we've seen today with the housing, just like we saw with Hubert Smith, who has really championed the issue around the Reimagined CAT programming, particularly relating to the trolley line. The trolley line is critical. It serves the elderly, disabled, and lower-income members. Particularly, what comes to mind to me is the Town View residence that lives up there on the hill over by Green Magnus School. This is one of their primary forms of transportation off the hill to connect directly to an actual CAT bus line. So when you cut the trolley, you are literally leaving hundreds of residents without access to true form of public transportation to assist their various daily lifestyle and livelihood needs. But this, again, is a trend of the city. You know what I think is hilarious? That if we were serious about bus renovation stops, then instead of blowing money on electric buses, this is where you should have put the money towards actually putting funds toward covering the bus stops and investing in safe bus stop locations. You did not do that. You instead chose to waste the money on electrical buses. That's what you did instead. Now we fast forward, and you're cutting more bus lines. We have already heard from public that the 90 to 90, particularly, that bus line been cut, killed so much access for job resource for so many demographics on the east and west side of Knoxville. And I want to continue to remind the voters the most critical piece. This administration had four years, four years to address housing, four years to address transportation, four years to address affordability, four years to raise the livable wage of income for our city residents, our city employees to an actual livable wage. Four years, Knoxville. Do we want to go through four more years of this nonsense? Or are we going to do something as the voters and take real accountability for ourselves and our own actions by putting this woman in office in the first place? I cannot say it enough. Empower yourselves, Knoxville voters. Let the West Knoxville supporters of India know that it's going to take east, south, and north Knoxville for them to outvote us in order to ensure the return of her administration regime. But let's not forget, she's made it very clear who she works for. Please look at Indy Cannon's donation financial records. It reveals and tells so much who really supports this woman administration and her campaign. And as we already know, she has centered certain initiatives. She has shown us that the rich and the rich only are the only voices she hears, articulates, and understands. Meanwhile, we need a leader like Amelia Parker, as you heard today, who gave viable and real resolution. And what do we get? A bunch of babble and nonsense in return, and I cannot imagine the frustration this woman goes through daily dealing with such council and rubber-stuffed administration. And again, this is why we are here. These people are up for reelection, including India herself. And I am running against her. You know the difference between me and India? One, we are going to fully fund public transportation. Two, we're going to expand public transportation by keeping the trolley, adding cable car, and most importantly, the recent most renovation of the white rail system that even the state itself right now is discussing an implementation for statewide services. So we do have real alternatives. We do have real options. But the question is, voters, how much longer are you going to tolerate it? How much longer are you willing to put up with inefficiencies? How much longer are you willing to listen to data that clearly points out that this was a disingenuous study, and this was a disingenuous research to only support a narrative of selected individuals who want to turn public transportation into a private enterprise of economical wealth? When are we, as the voters, going to hold real accountability for ourselves and be responsible for the elections of decisions we're making as voters for our future leaders? So for the last time, Knoxville, I cannot say this enough. We are less than hours away, 12 hours or so away from the polls opening tomorrow. And if you are serious about housing, if you are serious about public transportation, if you are serious about the poverty, if you are serious about homelessness, if you are serious about youth enrichment, if you are serious about growth and development, if you are serious about a diversified, inclusive city that acknowledges every single voice, not a select few voices, then there's only one name you should be checking tomorrow, and one name only, and that is Constance Everie. I yield my time.
Councilmembers, that concludes the people signed up to speak on item 11I. Ms. Fugit.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question about this in terms of, so the money is a grant. We would have a match. About how many bus stations?
With the improvements, yeah. Thank you. Bus stops, that was the word I was looking for, bus stop. Will this actually rehabilitate and improve? Isaac Thorne is here, Director of CAT, and he's ready to answer that question. Mr. Thorne?
And can you tell me how many we have in total as well?
How many bus stops we have in total? About 1,300 bus stops in total. Isaac Thorne, Director of Knoxville Area Transit, it really varies on how much we can actually deal with this $1.25 million. Every stop is different. So one stop may get a bus shelter, another stop may get just a semi-seater bench and a connector pad for that. So it really varies. I'd say on average, you could probably do most bus stops for $2,000 on average.
Okay. And do we have a priority list of which ones we would use?
We do, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Just while you're here, how are those bus stops determined?
Yeah, we determine those bus stops based on ridership at those stops, ADA accessibility at those stops. Also, we obviously want to put our resources towards the most highly-used bus stops. So we start there, and then we work our way down to accessibility issues to at certain stops. So that's how we're determining the priority list. And we have to disperse these bus shelters with equity as well. So it's not just putting all these in the north side, south side, east, west, throughout the entire system.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
I'm wondering if you've heard any feedback on the different infrastructure that has been implemented, like the lean-tos.
Yeah, so there was obviously a big blow up. Are you talking about referring to Los Angeles and their shade stops?
No, I don't know anything about that.
It was, it was big on Twitter for a while. We've looked at those. We have leaning rails right now in some of our shelters. I think that's what you're referring to. But we're also looking at ways to make sure that we have natural shade at stops, trees, but also actual canopies to protect people from the sun. But we'd really like to have more trees at stops and along walkways and sidewalks as well, because obviously, heat is an issue.
I think, well, just heads up, I haven't gotten very good feedback on the lean-tos. Some folks have found it a bit offensive even to not have the bench as an option and just to have the lean-to. I think as much as we can invest in a sheltered bench at as many stops as we can needs to be a priority, and I imagine you feel the same.
Yeah. Yeah, as much as possible we can, you know, sometimes it's easement requirement or whatnot. And that's what we're looking at too with this list of priority stops, so.
Ms. Parker, okay. Ms. Ryder?
Mr. Thorne, I think I heard you answer, Councilwoman Fugit, there 1,300 stops. And I think I heard you say you don't know how many stops you'll be able to work on, but you have a priority list. So what's the goal, though? I mean, when you guys were applying for the grant and having the discussion, was it, maybe we'll do 300, maybe we'll do 200, maybe we'll do five, maybe we'll do 1,000?
Yeah, we're going to try to do 200 stops with this $1.2 million. We also have another $1.3 million that we're also trying to allocate. We were waiting for CAT Reimagine to get approved before we start working on improving these stops. We didn't want to start improving them before that work was done.
Okay. Of the 1,300 stops, I can't remem, how long have you been here?
Three years.
Three years? Okay. You've done some great work with some of the stops. So of the 1,300 stops, how many of them are newly refurbished?
So just last year, we'd done 30, and I think the year before that, we did maybe 15. So 45 are newer stops, whether a bus shelter or actual new infrastructure at a bus stop.
Okay. So making small dents in the grant hopefully is to make a larger dent, but still a small percentage.
We are trying to make a lot of headway over the next two years, trying to do anywhere from, you know, 20, really 50 stops a year over the next two years. It just takes a lot of time because we have to go through an A&E, architectural and engineering at each one of these stops. Do we need an easement? What kind of infrastructure is needed at each and every different stop? That's why I said there are always, everyone's different.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to mention that as part of the tree canopy master plan, I think there's an opportunity there for those two programs to overlap. We can put trees around bus shelters. It's another bit of hospitality for bus riders, including myself. And I meant to mention this in my opening remarks, but I wanted to give a summary of CAT Reimagine, because I think we've heard a lot about that tonight. Last week, the KTA Board approved a resolution to affirm the new network that was proposed by CAT Reimagine. And despite some trade-offs, the new network will allow the average person to reach 20% more jobs within 45 minutes. It will be 24% more access to jobs for those below the poverty line, 26% more access to jobs for those people of color, 22% more access to jobs for people without a car, new 15-minute routes, and Sunday service that is very similar to Saturday service. So the surveys on the front end of this, where we hired extra staff and consultants to ride the bus and make sure that the Knoxville population was well-represented, had a good result. And so what you're going to get out of CAT Reimagine next year is faster commute, bottom line, and particularly for those people who need it most. So I'm really proud of the work that your staff has done. I think it's something that I've tried to update the council on along the way, and what we've got is a good result. Like I said, it's not without trade-offs, and we're not finished. So the CAT, KTA Board, will vote later this year or early next on the actual bus stops and the times associated with those. That's just really important, considering we're going to try to attack more bus stops. So there's more work to be done, but I believe the anticipated new network will be live next summer, end of next summer?
August of 2024.
August 2024. So Knoxville residents who ride the bus frequently will have a faster commute as a result. So I wanted to say a thank you for the excellent work on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, just wanted to commend you on the Reimagination CAT process. You took your time on it, which was longer than... You took your time on it, which was longer than a lot of projects take when they're doing the study. And I know you gave multiple opportunities for people to come out. You went to different parts of town. There was posted online where they could have input that way. And it seemed to me like you made every effort you could to have people to input and participate. And I know various instances where your staff and the consulting team took those instances to heart and made changes and some tweaks based on what you were getting from, from input. So it definitely wasn't an inflexible process, and I appreciate kind of the nimbleness that your staff did to try to accommodate the input that you were getting. And also, as Councilmember Smith pointed out, this is still an ongoing process. Once we get it in place, there has been trade-offs, but hopefully this will kind of stabilize the existing bus service, and based on, on that, then we can expand out and maybe get into some areas that aren't served now. So I appreciate, no process is perfect, but I certainly appreciate all the effort that, that your staff put in it. So thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. I'll just add that I appreciate, you know, Director Thorne's and his staff's work on CAT Reimagine and, and just on CAT's general, you know, services every, every day. I want to thank the members of the KTA Board who have been doing their volunteer work on, on moving forward on this process in a very intentional way. I also want to thank this council. We budget $14 million a year in local dollars to keep CAT operating, and that's a big amount, and it's important to the people of this community. It connects people to opportunity. I also want to just say that not only does CAT connect people to jobs, CAT has jobs. In fact, there's a, a job fair for bus operators coming up Saturday, August 19th, down at the Knoxville Station, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and those jobs have a starting salary of $18 an hour with benefits. Is there anything you wanted to add about that, Mr. Thorne? I know you're eager to attract more people.
Yeah, it's 1836, it tops out near $26 an hour.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on item 11A? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11J is a resolution expressing appreciation to Jason C. Stevens and Diane M. Reynolds for the easement donation located at 650 East Red Bud Road, parcel ID 109LD001, to expand Knoxville's urban wilderness and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to accept said donation.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank personally the, the property owners of JK and 11 on our agenda. I'm going to repeat a, a talking point that I, I like to say a lot, which is in South Knoxville, you're never more than a mile away from a park, and it's because of property owners who understand the, the value of urban wilderness and the connections between neighborhoods. This is a prime example of why that is a fact. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11K is a resolution expressing appreciation to Gate House Properties LLC for the easement donation located at 650 East Red Bud Road, parcel ID 109LD002, to expand Knoxville's urban wilderness and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to accept said donation.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11L is a resolution expressing appreciation to The Drop Inn Knox LLC for the easement donation located at 4507 Severville Pike, tax parcel ID 109LD006, to expand Knoxville's urban wilderness and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to accept said donation.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11M is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Knoxville Falcons Youth Athletics to offer and oversee youth sports and outdoor recreational programming at Chris and Barry Ballfields and Alice Bell Ballfields.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Council, I just want to reiterate this as an extension of our sublease with Falcon Youth Athletics that serves, that provides dozens of programs for kids in that area, ages four to 16, and serves so many families. The city has invested more than half a million dollars in improvements around the park, and we have formed partnerships that are making this an even better location. A new playground's about to be installed, there's going to be a new roof at the community center, new turf scoreboards and fencing around the fields, batting cage improvements are being made, and new smart TVs are coming soon to the community center. So thank you for your support of all these investments and of this agenda item before you tonight. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Council, since we've been meeting for almost two hours, it's been suggested that we take a brief recess. Let's reconvene at 8:05. Okay, it's 8:06. Let's reconvene, council. Go ahead and just start.
12A is an ordinance appropriating the sum of $2,850 from the Community Empowerment Budget, donating same to Ashes to Glory to provide raincoats, bags, and school supplies for students. Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
12B is an ordinance appropriating the sum of $2,000 from Parks and Recreation Department funds and donating same to the Boys and Girls Club of the Tennessee Valley to utilize toward the Greater Knoxville Sports Hall of Fame Dinner and Induction Ceremony.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion?
Just a brief comment. I believe NBA star Grant Williams is going to speak here, and I think our own Larry Cox is going to be honored, so.
Great. Good to know. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12C is an ordinance appropriating the total sum of $1,850 from the Parks and Recreation Department's Grant, Grants and Medevailance Fund and donating same toward the sponsorship of Imes Nature Center annual fundraiser Twilight at Imes.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to disclose I'm a board member of Imes Nature Center, but I do not receive compensation, so I'll be happily supporting this.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12D is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification for property located at 7624 Sabre Drive from No Zone to RN1 District, City of Knoxville, Atherton, 2nd District.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made to approve and seconded. Vice Mayor Roberto.
Thank you, Mayor. This, you all may remember from a previous item in a different agenda we had, is we're going from a No Zone, this is a, a property that's coming into the city now. So currently, it's got No Zone, and we're moving it to RN1. I don't want to have a No Zone for a long period of time because potentially you could grab a permit, do almost anything you wanted. So I'd like to read this on emergency, so I'm going to make a motion to read this on emergency.
Motion made to read this on emergency has been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none. Do we have to do that? Okay, so the motion is to be amended to be read on emergency. We're voting on that amendment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So back to the original motion as amended to be read as an emergency. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12E is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification for property located at 2920 Dresser Road from No Zone to CG1 District, City of Knoxville, applicant 1st District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Similar to Vice Mayor's comments, I would like to make a motion to approve this on emergency. This has gone from No Zone to CG Zone, which is the same as what's abutting the property. Nonetheless, I don't want to have a property sit out there too long, so I would make that motion to approve on emergency.
Second.
Okay, motion to have this be read on emergency has been made and seconded. This motion to amend is what you vote in right now. Any questions or discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Back to the original motion as amended. Any further questions or discussion? Mr. Smith, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12F is an ordinance approving the request of Regency Associate's GP for an amendment to the Northwest City Sector Plan from Low Density Residential to Medium Density Residential for property located at 4813 Lonest Drive, leaving any special purpose land use classifications unchanged, 2nd District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Vice Mayor Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. Is the developer here by any chance?
Mr. Mullins is present.
Ben Mullins, 550 West Main Street, here for the applicant.
Yes, Mr. Mullins, could you tell us a little bit about what the plans are for the property?
Sure. This is a, you know, this is a property that's currently zoned RN1. There is RN5 to the west, there's RN4 also to the west, RN3 to the south, and RN6 to the southeast. This is actually a piece of property that's between a single-family residential and an existing apartment. RN3 was, we considered to be a good buffer zone. It would allow, you know, greater density, or mix and density of, you know, potentially some townhomes, duplexes, even single-family, but would not allow apartments. And so I thought it'd be a good transition zone from the existing apartments, which is owned by the same developer, to the single-family residential neighborhood. I have been in contact since we filed the application with the Lonest Drive Community Association. I've talked to them about, you know, we don't have a development plan in place. We don't know exactly what type of housing we're going to put on there. We'd probably look at townhouses first, but that depends on kind of doing the engineering once we know we have the zoning in place. But, you know, they feel better knowing that apartments can't go there, and they also feel better knowing that the HP overlay will still stay in place, and that, you know, there'll have to be a development plan, moving through Planning Commission, some type of concept at that time. So that's really what we're doing. We don't have any things specific in mind, but we're looking at some type of, you know, medium-density housing.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that there had been some discussions with the neighborhood. I appreciate you and applaud you for doing that in advance. The only other piece of it that I was thinking about is looking at the property. It looks like there are some mature trees that are there between where the neighborhood is and the property that you're looking to develop. Are there plans to try to keep some of those mature trees and have that as a buffer with the neighborhood?
As much as possible, yes. I mean, there are, you know, landscaping requirements and buffer requirements for what will go in there, and so whenever you can keep existing vegetation and not remove it, that's more beneficial both to the neighborhood and for the developer not having to replant and go through that expense. I know, though, there's been quite a bit of deadfall in that area as well, and that's been something the developers have actually been working with, with the neighbors that are, you know, contiguous there, and helping clean that up as it occurs.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12G is an ordinance approving the request of Regency Associate's GP for a one-year plan amendment from Low Density Residential to Medium Density Residential for property located at 4813 Lonest Drive, leaving any special purpose land use classifications unchanged, 2nd District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12H is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 4813 Lonest Drive from RN1 District to RN3 District, leaving all special purpose and overlay districts unchanged. Regency Associate's GP, applicant 2nd District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12I is an ordinance approving the request of Regency Associate's GP for an amendment to the Northwest City Sector Plan from Medium Density Residential to General Commercial for property located at 4629 Paper Mill Drive, 2nd District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or, Vice Mayor Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. Is the developer here? Mr. Mullins?
Same developer.
Can you tell us, you're rezoning here to CG1. Can you talk to us a little bit about what your plans are?
Sure. There's a little bit of history to this. This was originally a planned residential zone, and the front portion of the property was, there was a development plan approved at the time that the now Addison Apartments to the north were developed, using this as kind of a commercial use there under the old RP1 zone. Sometime between 1998 and 2001, the entire site was graded. All the utilities and infrastructure were there to put two little shopping areas with a single entrance. They developed one and built out. The grading, the utilities, the plumbing, everything was laid out for the second one, but they never did develop that one, and that development plan had expired. And so there, you know, it kind of happened around 2008 when the Great Recession hit, and so that kind of laid dormant for a while. The developer now intends to complete the commercial development under the existing plans, but since those plans had expired and RECODE had intervened, we needed to look at changing the zoning ordinance. And CG1 is kind of the predominant commercial zone along that corridor, and it would allow them not to have to change, rip up any of the existing infrastructure they built for the second pad, and use that footprint for the development instead of the CG2, which would then force that Build 2 Zone issue there. This was something that we worked with, you know, city engineering and planning, about whether or not we could even continue to do under the existing RP zone, and they said, no, we'd prefer the CG1 zoning instead of going under the RP1 zone and use the existing zoning. But staff recommended it. It was passed unanimously on consent, so.
And I don't see any objection to the CG zoning here at all. The only concern I have is that you're going from CG2, which has design standards, to CG1, which does not have any design standards at all. And so what my question to you is, you know, I know you're doing some renovations here with this building. What are you, what are you planning on with design for the building? The thing that I'm really looking at here is I don't want to see any more, you know, rear-facing buildings to the street, or not having any transparency or windows at the street level. And when you don't have any design standards, that gives me a lot of concern. So just wanted to make sure I had a better understanding of what you were going to do.
Well, and if you'll look at what's already developed there on the other side, I mean, it's kind of a sister to that, which, you know, is, you know, front-facing. There's parking in the front, but you know, there's, you know, it's a, different components can be leased out to different commercial, but there's windows and, you know, office uses, things of that. I think, I'm trying to remember what's out there now. I mean, but I think there's a driving school, and there's a little mini, mini mart right there, a little convenience store. And so we're looking at similar type of development, but again, it would be facing, that would be facing the street, not facing the residential properties behind. There's quite a bit of topography. There's a berm there between the apartments and this, which is kind of the reason why it was a natural separation between the residential and then the commercial-facing paper mill.
Well, and certainly, looking at it, I would have expected that, but you can see my concern while I'm asking that question.
Absolutely. And again, it's the trade-off between, you know, the Build 2 Zones and the design standards on this, but, you know, this one is, I think, a little less controversial than some we've had in the past.
I understand. And so I guess my next question is for Director Brooks. I know council had a workshop back in April where we talked about this again, with not having any design standards in CG1. You know, we have design standards in CG2 and 3. You know, they're not particularly restrictive, but I think it definitely gives me a lot of concern when we don't have any design standards at all. And it's been mentioned before, would it be helpful to Planning Commission if a resolution was brought asking for you to look into doing design standards for CG1? Because I know we've talked about this before, but we haven't really seen any movement here.
Yes. If the administration and council would like for us to take a closer look at CG1 and consider adding design standards to those, we would need some direction on that. As you all know, we've, we still have potential pending amendments at CG2 and CG3 that are underway. It could be something that we start to look at as part of that, but more preferably, we would want to do that in a separate, separate action.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12J is an ordinance approving the request of Regency Associate's GP for a one-year plan amendment from Medium Density Residential to General Commercial for property located at 4629 Paper Mill Drive, 2nd District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12K is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification for property located at 4629 Paper Mill Drive from CG2 District to CG1 District. Regency Associate's GP, applicant 2nd District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12L is an ordinance approving the request of Matt Brazil Civil and Environmental Consultants Incorporated for an amendment to the Central City Sector Plan from Medium Density Residential to Medium Density Residential Office for property located at 1800 and 1900 Vermont Avenue, leaving any special purpose land use classifications unchanged, 6th District.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12M is an ordinance approving the request of Matt Brazil Civil and Environmental Consultants Incorporated for a one-year plan amendment to, from Medium Density Residential to Medium Density Residential Office for property located at 1800 and 1900 Vermont Avenue, leaving any special purpose land use classifications unchanged, 6th District.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12N is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 1800 and 1900 Vermont Avenue from RN4 District to RN6 District, leaving all special purpose and overlay districts unchanged. Matt Brazil Civil and Environmental Consultants Incorporated applicant 6th District.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12O is an ordinance to amend ordinance number O-107-2019, known and cited as the City of Knoxville Zoning Code, to remove a previously approved planned district designation from property located at 777720 Gleason Drive, Jim Odell, applicant 2nd District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Vice Mayor Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have anyone from the developer here?
Yes.
Jim Odell, OYSK3 Architects, 1545 Western Avenue.
Welcome. I was wanting to know, just, I think what you're doing here is you've maybe got some existing property there where you're already operating, and you're wanting to remove the previously approved planned district, maybe to give yourself some flexibility to add some more buildings for some additional units. Is that basically right?
That is correct.
Okay. And I just wanted to get a sense for where you were with that, just for everybody's recollection on council, but then also the public. This is an example of transparency, where originally, the request that we were getting for council was to just remove these automatically, and instead, what we're asking folks to do is exactly what you're doing, is coming and asking for it to be removed so we can go through a public process. So I'm very pleased that we're continuing to do that. And so, thank you for doing that. And then, can you tell us a little bit about the additional units you're looking at adding?
Historically, this was probably two different properties, and one of them had a historic overlay, a residential overlay, which had a certain number of units per acre. And at some point in, this goes back probably at least 25 years. At some point, these were combined. The property has a large easement for TVA power lines coming through, and the ownership that we now have would like to probably combine the properties totally and then develop one additional building on the site, probably about 18 to 24 units.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12P is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 2620 Belvedere Avenue from RN1 District to AG District, leaving all special purpose and overlay districts unchanged. Bernadette West, applicant 1st District.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, or, thank you, Mayor.
I'll remember that.
Yeah. Ms. West, would you come to the podium? You've been kind enough to be patient through our evening, a little longer than a beer board, but you're here nonetheless. We don't typically see agriculture, we typically see agriculture being rezoned to residential, and you doing the inverse. Could you just share what your thoughts are on this?
And I thought the beer board meetings were tough. Man. Yeah. I just, I want to go more agriculture, because I have six acres there, and that, me and my neighbors, we live on a dead-end street, and we just kind of like it being very open, and we're actually, I've got a greenhouse there, and so we just want to kind of perpetuate a more agricultural area instead of having it being developed with housing. And so I've got some chickens, and I just want it to be more agriculture than I do residential.
Thank you.
Just kind of keep it nice and quiet. It kind of butts up next to IMES, and so it just seemed like a natural flow for where I'm at.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
12Q is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification for property located at 1216 Callaway Street from RN2 District to RN4 District, R Bentley Marlowe, applicant 6th District.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Marley?
Yeah, this is just asking to have this rezoned so that it can possibly be redeveloped as part of a missing metal housing initiative. I have intentions to save the historic home at a carriage house, garage apartment against the alley, and I'd like to figure out how I could get three tiny homes, because this lot became rather large, thanks to a Wardmap issue forced me to combine portions of other lots. So I've got a little over 10,000 square feet, which is extremely out of character in Mechanicsville. I'm just trying to do my part to create more housing in our time of need. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes people signed up to speak to this item. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
12R is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification for property located at 9950 Kingston Pike from OP District to CG1 District, Christopher W. Martin, applicant 6th District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Vice Mayor Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. Is the developer here?
If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Chris Martin, 111 Fox Road, Knoxville, 37922.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Martin. Can you talk to us a little bit about what your plans are here?
So this building is a large bank building out on Kingston Pike near the intersection of Pelsippi Parkway. It was originally constructed by SunTrust, well, Third National, and then SunTrust. Last year, well, actually earlier this year, Mountain Commerce Bank bought the building. The plans for the building are to leave it exactly as a bank. I mean, if you look at the building, it's a bank. They are facelifting the very entrance right now to mimic the building that they constructed at the intersection of Kingston Pike and North Shore Drive. The reason for the rezoning is... North Shore Drive. The reason for the rezoning is that SunTrust Bank, or SunTrust contains eight letters, Mountain Commerce contains 16. And so, under the existing zoning, we were restricted on the sign, and getting Mountain Commerce Bank on the building, large enough to actually read it, violated the existing sign ordinance for that zoning. So we asked for a zoning change, basically to allow signage.
Okay. And so, you're not going to change the orientation of the building, or where the entrance is, or any of that? You're doing a facelift to the entrance?
Just the entrance, that's it. There's no window changes or anything.
Well, and the same reason I'm asking you about this is the one from before. This is going to CG1, which doesn't have any design standards. I drive by the building. I was pretty sure you weren't going to be making any major changes to the orientation of the building, but again, there's no design standards in CG1.
Correct.
So I need to ask you that question because I don't want to see any more rear-facing buildings, or buildings without transparency or windows facing the street. So it's a major problem that we need to get fixed. And that's not your issue, that's our issue, and something we need to address. But I appreciate you telling us what's going on there. Director Brooks, again, you know, this is being raised, again, maybe another, maybe a resolution needs to be brought, which I can bring, to address this, but since I already addressed that last time, the other piece of our workshop that we had back in April was talking about CG2 and CG3, which is related to this. Where are we enabling the pedestrian commercial corridors that we talked about in that workshop?
The Planning Commission tabled the CG2 and CG3, those amendments that have been pending since last fall at their June meeting, to allow for additional input and dialogue. And the Planning Commission's requested that staff present a revised timeline for consideration of those amendments by the September meeting. So we will be working on that over the next 30 days and present that timeline to Planning Commission in September.
I know just from the workshop and the discussion, there's a lot of interest in making sure we encourage that and preserve those pedestrian commercial corridors. So I think that's something we need to be looking at, too. I do think the design standards piece needs to be separated from that, because I could see a lot more discussion being needed and stakeholders being found and discussed with about the CG2 CG3 issue. But I think this issue with CG1 and the design standards is going to keep coming up, so we really need to address it. Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
12S is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification for property located at 1927 Highland Avenue from O District to RN6 District. Mohammed Reza Basari, applicant 1st District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12T is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification for property located at Zero Ronan Road from RN1 District to RN2 District. Patrick Smith and Amber Van Buren, applicants 5th District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve.
Second.
And seconded, Councilmember Thomas.
Yes, I just want to commend the applicants back there for the process that they followed. They actually reached out even before this went to the Planning Commission. And we had discussions with them. They went to the Neighborhood Association early on, and as a result, RN1, the motion is to RN2, and that will allow two new single-family homes. And then there's a third building that will be renovated. So this will allow three single-family homes in Inskip, and that's an area that's had a lot of multi-unit housing lately. And so it gives a nice balance and more options for people who want to live in that neighborhood. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12U is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 1547 Clinch Avenue from RN5 District to CN District, leaving all special purpose and overlay districts unchanged. Benjamin Mullins, applicant 1st District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Smith.
Just one question, Mr. Mullins. Can you just describe what your plans, or the developer's plans are here?
Yes, they wanted the flexibility to have both ground-floor commercial and above-floor residential, and the neighborhood commercial zone is one of the more flexible zones to allow both of those that fit in the character of the Fort Sanders community. And so, that was something that we arrived at after consulting with planning staff as to what would be the best zone to accommodate their intended use.
I totally agree. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12V is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification for property located at 4425 Lonest Drive from RN1 District to RN2 District. North Shore Construction Incorporated, applicant 6th District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12W is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification for property located at 6704 Watermore Way from IMU District to O District. Ryan Dolan, applicant 3rd District.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilmembers, we have several people signed up for public forum. First is Hannah Freeman. Ms. Freeman, you'll have up to five minutes. If you could start by stating your name and address for the record.
Yeah, so, can everyone hear me okay? Awesome. My name is Hannah Freeman. I'm 26 years old, 37912, 4501 Tillary Drive, also known as Tanglewood is my residence now. I've been in Knoxville for 26 years, so if you caught my age, that's up until now. I was born at the University of Tennessee Hospital. I'm a student of the University of Tennessee College. There's been a lot of emotion. Just standing here seeing you all, I'm already emotional, because it's been a really tough month. And I think that some of you don't fully understand the full picture of what we went through, just in the past week or so, two weeks or so. I think it's normal to have gradual rent increases. That's something everyone's pretty accustomed to now, year by year, right? So I signed my lease in 2022 for $750 at Tanglewood. It was perfect. That's a steal. I've moved all around Knoxville. I've moved in Lewisville, Tennessee, right south of Knoxville, you know, paid anything from 550 all the way up to 1,200 before, but 750 a month for a two-bedroom in a nice little neighborhood, dogs allowed, pools, basketball courts, you know, it was a great area, great still. So I signed immediately, because as it's been addressed several times tonight, rent's not cheap in Knoxville, and it's not getting any cheaper. So we were really, really happy to find what we did. When I resigned in 2023, I was kind of shocked at my renewal. I had expected an increase. I didn't expect a 12% increase. So my rent renewal, resigning at the beginning of this year, was for $850. I still resign that. That's still a deal, you know? As I think Ms. Parker pointed out, we have 10,000 or so units to go before we're even like close to a normal balance here in Knoxville with all the people flooding in. And we see it. Now, a lot of our people at Tanglewood are transplants. I mean, I'm born and raised here. I'm an eighth-generation East Tennessean and a fifth-generation Knoxvilleian, so I'm here. I've seen it for a long time. And nothing like this, though. So, two weeks ago, I got informed that my $850 lease is now going to be $1,400, and I'm expected to pay that on renewal in October. It's July. I don't have that kind of income as a student and a full-time worker. It's $20,000 extra that I would have to make a year in order to come up with even being accepted at the requirement that I would have to earn three times the amount of rent a month. Nobody can do that. That doesn't sound like a circumstance that's real, or it may sound like, just to some of you, like it's a circumstance that's hard to hear, but it's a reality for 350 people. And I'm just one of them. A lot of them are still here, but not all. Not all of them can be here. And that's not fair. We talk about this fair market value. That's not it. That's $550 increase. That's a 65% increase, 65% increase. I don't know who can come up with that in two months' time, but I can. And that's the reality. So, I had a lot of other things that I wrote down to talk about today, and I'm kind of flying off the cusp now because I'm emotional, which I didn't expect to be, but hey. But really, I've never, I've never addressed the council before. I've sat here in meetings, I've listened, but I'm here today because we need help. And I've heard words thrown around that I know nothing about, a bond, subsidies, you know, all kinds, rezoning, all kinds of things, right? But I'm, I'm a citizen that pays taxes here. There's nothing about what you all do sitting in the seats you are. So what I need from you all is, like you've already said, and I plan to take you all to take seriously, bold action on, on something here around Knoxville, because I think we can all agree that nobody deserves to be put in this position where rent is doubled in a month. It just shouldn't exist. So please consider that going forward. Please consider the Tanglewood residents when you go to bed tonight, when, when you come back to workshop. But thank you, that's all.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Nikki Lynn. You could start by saying your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
My name's Nikki Lynn, and I am a resident at 4501 Tillary Drive, otherwise known as Tanglewood Apartments. Or, I'm sorry, previously, it's now Ran at Tillary. That happened overnight for us. It happened on July 20. I walked out my door, and I received a letter from the maintenance worker walking around putting notices on everyone's door that effective immediately. We had no previous warning that our property had been bought out by another company. This company came in without notice and told us that our rent was doubling. Oh, I'm sorry, they didn't tell us. We weren't told. We were told by a neighbor who was gracious enough to tell all of his friends, all of his family, because that's what we are now. We have residents that have lived there for over 23 years. We have domestic violence survivors that have lost their children. They have, because they were homeless, literally homeless, they found hope. They got their children back because of those cheap rent prices that we were getting before the pandemic. But when Ran came in, they doubled our rent. We've seen some things happen. Oh, we got new, we got new sidewalks, yay. They fixed our pool, yeah. Those things weren't really an issue. What the issues were, were the fact that our apartments are flooding. The person that took their spot tonight couldn't be here tonight because her apartment's flooded because of the storms the other night. That's been an issue. Ran can't tell you that it's not an issue, because they had surveyors at our complex two weeks before, okay? They don't care about us, because if they did care about us, they wouldn't be raising single parents' rent double. I used to work at a social services organization in Knoxville that this council helps fund. And I can assure you that the $18 an hour that you're going to be paying bus drivers is about the same amount that you're paying for social service case managers, who are going to be the people that are taking care of all of us that are getting ready to get evicted, because we can't pay double the rent. Okay? Paint that picture for you, because they're not the only ones. Single parents aren't. We're talking about seniors who get $820 roughly a month. Yep, they are going to be homeless. I know seniors that are also employed with a senior work program at CAC. They're not going to be able to afford $1,600 a month, even with their supplemental income. I work for a homeless service organization now. The homeless rate in Knoxville is out the roof. 57% of all homelessness in Knox County is due to affordable housing and eviction. You're getting ready to add about 350 people to that. It's imperative that we look at innovative solutions to this. We know that the state law can't be changed unless Mayor Concanon will go advocate for us at the state level with the governor.
That's right.
Okay? It's, it's simple, okay? We're looking at getting assistance from organizations that are listed on 211. That's great. Love 211. Used to help out with it. But do any of those organizations actually have funds to help all my neighbors who are going to be homeless in three months? Okay? They don't, because, again, I work for a homeless services organization. Let me tell you, we're going through HUD Notice of Funding Opportunity right now, okay? That's going to be based on the fair market value for 2023. Let me give you those numbers, in case you don't have it. That's going to be about $827 for a one-bedroom apartment. Don't think that's quite 1,600, okay? Any of the HUD-funded grants are going to require, per their grant contract, that they meet that. Anything over the fair market value is having to come in from local funds. So our government funding housing for low-income folks can't even meet the demands that we have here. As someone that works in homeless services, we can't house our folks, because there's nowhere we can put them that's affordable. Thank you.
Next person signed up is John Zieda. Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
My name is John Zieda, and I live at 48 Encare Court in Knoxville, Tennessee. And I am here again for the fourth, fifth, sixth time, I don't know how many times. And we're going to keep coming back until we get this situation straightened out. December 29, 2012, the City of Knoxville sent the fire department to burn a business, and it's all provable. That store was burned and stolen from the owner. After the fire department and the police department, imagine this, the fire department burns it, the arson investigator, mind you, we're not talking about just the fire people, we're talking about the investigator, arson investigator. They burned the store, and one police officer was over there backed up the story. They said India Gorley died in the store. We've got, he died, supposedly. Now we've got a coroner involved, Lockmiller. Coroner Lockmiller stated that India Gorley died in that store. Our coroner. We've got the fire department and the police department and the coroner stating that India Gorley was inside that store, burned in it. I am angry. Never have I ever thought that this city, or any city, could come up with such BS. Never have I ever thought, and it was all to steal property. The owner had just bought that building, and I don't know how Bob Tool and the Tool family is intertwined with the city. family is intertwined with the city. I don't know that detail. But I know Captain, Fire Captain Parton stated that it was an experiment. And it's true, I could see where it was an experiment. There were cameras in the cooler and some kind of other equipment in the cooler. When we have the fire department, the police department, the coroner, the motor vehicle department, because I've talked to all these people, KUB, and today, or this week, I realized it was even the church. Now, the church, I don't know if they know that their name was used or they went along with it. The fire captain Parton this year stated that it was an experiment. We cannot, people, have an experiment and this man accused of burning the store. My father's store was burned, and we knew the city stole it, but we never knew that the city would come in that store and burn it. This story is provable. And the coroner, Lockmiller. Now, I'm here in Constance Avery. She stated tomorrow's election. And I'm asking the mayor to ask the fire department, in front of everybody here, to ask the question, who burned that store? And I think everybody here would want to hear that answer. Huh?
Yep.
Ask them. Who burned that store? We live in America. Who would ever thought that this city would go in their store and burn it? You make sure that these people don't have a son or a daughter that'll come back at you. And I'll be back again. I want to check for my father's store. We knew in 1992, 93, that that store was burned, was stolen by the city. It was an explosive device because it was unexplained how that fire went. And I'm going to ask you one more time in front of these people to ask, stand over there, who burned that store? India Gourley or the city? We're waiting. Are we not waiting, people? Are we not? Why are you not asking? You deep down know the answer.
Your time is up, Mr. Zieda. Next person signed up to speak is Tom Ruggles.
You deep down know the answer, and nobody in this bright mind would have thought that this city would burn any of this.
Members, Mr. Zieda, thank you very much. Just members who are of the audience who are listening, his questions have been answered through the Law Department many years ago. Mr. Tom Ruggles, you're signed up to speak next.
My name is Tom Ruggles. I live in District 2 of Knoxville. I'll keep this very short and sweet because I feel like folks have already relayed all the points that I wanted to make today. But obviously, you all have heard of what's occurring over at the Tanglewood Apartments, and that is not a particularly unique occurrence. Things like that happen at other places when new rent and leases come up. In my personal situation, where I rent at, it hasn't been as egregious of an increase, but when I moved here three years ago, I was paying about $780. Now I'm paying $1030. So over the course of three years, it's gone up, you know, somewhere around 35%. And my story is the same as many other folks here in the city of Knoxville. So I just wanted to reach out to all the renters here in Knoxville and know that, you know, we really need to stand together in solidarity, not only with our folks at Tanglewood, but also amongst ourselves because it's time that, you know, we tried to push back against what was being done to this city as far as the rent increases and that we also would appreciate some help from this body as well. And I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up is Rick Roach.
Rick Roach, Knoxville. It's public forum. It's a lot on my mind, but we'll deal with what was brought up today. Tanglewood Apartments, all the Rand properties. About, this is about whether or not you all want, as a body, as an elected body, to actually empower the people that voted for you. Now, keep in mind, Knoxville has a really poor record. And I've reminded, when I've talked to some of these folks, I've reminded them about that poor record, and it has to do with voting. Somebody can help me with the total numbers. How many registered voters do we have in the city of Knoxville?
Over 100,000.
What's the percent?
25% is the ballot.
That actually vote?
Yeah.
And there you have it. So either people are thoroughly discouraged from participating in the electoral process, they don't give a damn, or, you know, that's it, you know, one of the two. Now, of that 25%, I'm going to say something that may tick a lot of people off, but of that 25%, I guarantee you, most of them don't have neighborly feelings toward their fellow electors. Okay? Let's be honest about that. So they have particular interests that you all cater to and pump everybody up about, and they jump on that bandwagon. So when it comes time to get down to the nitty-gritty and come up with solutions for the city, when you all pump them up, when you all blow smoke up there, you know what? Guess what happens? They buy it. And there is conflict among the populace, okay? And you find that people, because they are misinformed and don't know what the deal is, they end up doing something that's pretty predictable. They engage in conflict, again, with their neighbors. They don't even try to represent their own best interests. And I think some of you all know that. And you misrepresent what the real issues are and how some of these issues can be solved because we know that in the process of you all running for office, most of you do not thoroughly say what the situation really is, and you know better. One of the good things that happened to me, when I had people come to me and ask me, I didn't go and seek it, they asked me to serve on advisory committees, Neighborhood Advisory Council, Knoxville-Knox County Food Policy Council, okay? Oh, and I participated in that empowerment zone process where millions of dollars were supposed to be flooding into these designated empowerment zones. And there's truly only, there's two zones that just happen to be still in need of empowerment. All this money came flowing in, and y'all do the, y'all go back and look. Go back and look. East Knoxville, the East Zone, Mechanicsville-Lonsdale, part of that West Zone, okay, empowerment zone, millions of dollars supposed to come through. You know what? You know what we got? We couldn't even get a library in the East Zone because we had to, we couldn't get the city to support us in that effort. Couldn't get it because the Knox County government was over the library system, okay? And we couldn't get any support. We got a grocery store built, and now that grocery store is a church. And we still have the largest food desert in Knoxville, from Summit all the way out to the split, okay? Hmm, man. Track record sucks, you guys. Your track record sucks. You gotta correct it.
Okay. Next person signed up to speak is Glory Ledbetter. Ms. Ledbetter, if you could state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Glory Ledbetter. I live at 4619 Sunflower Road, 37909, so here in Knoxville, District 2. I have lived here in Knoxville for the last four or five years after returning home from New England, and I have lived here the whole life before that. And whenever I was in New England, people would always ask me, like, oh, how you like it here? You're going to stay here, right? And I would be like, no way! Why would I want to? Knoxville is great. It's my home. It's a magical place, and some, you know, ties that we have here to the land as Appalachians. So I came back to fulfill my dreams, got a job, looked at apartments, did the responsible thing, and picked an apartment below my budget. And, you know, obviously, there's a lot of things that are outside of you guys' control, and that's totally understandable. But as a small business owner who's working a job to support that dream, invest in those things, do all the right things, it's really discouraging to have that dream taken away. And like Hannah was saying, you know, it's strangely emotional, but it makes so much sense. I mean, housing is such a basic human need. So, you know, the, I've had no complaints, actually, about Rand. They've managed our property fairly well, but there have been the increases. So when I signed my lease in 2019, it was $790 a month, which is pretty reasonable. My rent, they have offered me my new lease come October for $1,116, so $1,116 per month. So over the course of four years, my rent has risen 30%. And as a small business owner, I can't go to my boss to ask for a raise. And no one would be able to get a 30% raise. And I know you mean so well by that. Workers have more power now to negotiate for wages than ever, but the rates are just too high. And like I said, I know your hands are tied when it comes to rate control, but I have firm belief that when we work together, when we cooperate, when we're creative, there are solutions. There are possibilities. There are things we can do now because I also agree that increasing the supply will do a lot of good. But I fall in that missing middle. I make too much to apply for any of the programs. I make too little to qualify for a mortgage. And as a single woman, I don't have a partner. So I fall in the missing middle. And so I have made the unfortunate decision that I'm going to have to leave Knoxville. And I will not be signing my lease. I hope to find housing outside of Knoxville, Knox County, that is reasonable enough and a close enough distance to commute and to keep my business. But if I can't, I will have to go somewhere else. And I just think that's a shame. People are coming here because of what we have, and the people are part of that. And if we're all driven out, it won't be the same place. It won't be Knoxville anymore. The National Realtors Association put Knoxville as number one in the country for rate rental increases. We beat Fort Myers, Florida by half a percent. It's nuts. And there has to be something that can be done, and something that can be done not in a year, something that can be done now. And I appreciate, I've used those 211 services, they're great. When I lost my job during COVID, used them, got what I needed. But you have to be, almost to be evicted to use most of these services, and my savings, you know, for my business are so valuable. Why would I wait for them to be gone when I can be investing them in Knox County, in Knoxville? But I have to take them away, and that's a shame.
Counsel, that concludes public forum. Without objection, this meeting is adjourned.